Good evening. May twentieth, twenty twenty four, seven oh four P M. Call the planning commission, so calling planning commission to order. And first I'll do the roll call. I am present. Luke Maruziak. And. I'll just go around the thing, Vice Chair Testman.
President.
Commissioner Steve Smith. Don't see him. Yeah, Commissioner Kilcup's actually in the bullpen. So uh it you said that Commissioner Smith gave us a uh he's not gonna be able to make it, okay. That Commissioner Kilcup is coming in, Commissioner Crone.
Present.
Mister Lambert.
Present.
Okay. You promoting Commissioner Kilcup? Okay. There we go. And Commissioner Kilcup?
Present.
Okay, as Commissioner Smith has given us. Uh notice that he was gonna make it, a move that we excuse Commissioner Smith, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mister Smith is excused. Are there any? Public comments for items not on the agenda? I don't see any in the. It's none present. Then we move on to approve the current agenda for May twentieth as written, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. And um. Do we miss an agenda item? Should we have the uh, oh there it's done, it's okay, Council Liaison Report, next agenda. There we have. Councilmember Johnson.
Greetings, Commissioner. Uh, we had a packed agenda at our last council meeting. Uh, first thing I wanted to tell you about is the mayor's proposed nonutility C I P for twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. That runs a grand total over the course of those years of. Around sixty million dollars in various projects and programs over those five years with matching sources. The good news is that we've removed a couple of items. We removed the Spray Park and the All Inclusive Playground because the All Inclusive Playground is done. And the Spray Park will likely be completed this summer. Uh, last I heard, it was planned for early July. Uh, we'll see when exactly it lands, but that's the last I heard for that one. Uh, the other item of note, of course, that I'm sure everyone's interested in is the community center expansion. Uh, last time I had looked before the mayor's proposed C I P, it was sitting around thirty four million. And I was getting really nervous. Uh, the current number is actually down quite a bit from that, down at twenty nine million. So we'll we'll see how that goes. Uh, the main sources being from REIT and sales tax along with a few other things. That are yet to be decided. And as you could imagine, the council will have a tremendous amount of deliberation. Uh, over that particular item before we either approve the C I P as it is, uh, or approve any contracts, of course. But I did want to just highlight a couple of concepts as we head into the C I P process. The first is that the C I P is broken into two large categories, nonutility and utility. Uh, the mayor has so far proposed a nonutility C I P, we'll get a proposal for a utility C I P at some point down the road. And that covers obviously so stormwater, that sort of thing. Uh, so the nonutility C I P is broken into two broad categories of projects and programs. Um, programs are things that are recurring items that we know we're gonna have to spend all the time. Like resurfacing streets, every year we've got streets that at some point we'll need some work done on them, so we know that we're gonna have to spend that. Uh, we have the sidewalk replacement program, uh, where. Uh, over time sidewalks lift up because of tree movement or uh because of uh. Things that happen to uh the soils underneath, expansion and thawing with the weather, et cetera. Uh, they can break, so there are all kinds of reasons why we have these programs that do the things we know we have to do. Another example being a playground replacement. We know that our playgrounds get old and we have to replace them. And the example of a project would be like the River Trail Project, formerly known as the Riverwalk. We now call it the River Trail. Uh, that is a big project that we're not going to be replacing anytime in the near future. Uh, but it does not yet exist, at least most of it doesn't. Uh, we have a little tiny section uh over by. Uh, the playground with the trains, River Riverview Park, I think it's called, anyway. Uh, that's an example of a project would be the River Trail Project. Uh, projects are funded by, since they're big one-time-ish expenditures, they're funded mostly by one-time sources. Uh, like grants are a good example of a one-time source. And then programs are funded by the most part by ongoing sources, like a gas tax, for example. You know, we're gonna be collecting a certain amount of tax on that, uh, so we put that money toward the things uh that we can spend that money on, like street resurfacing. Uh, so that's kind of the the main breakdown of the mayor's proposed uh nonutility C I P for twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. Uh, we have not adopted this as a council, as our ongoing C I P, uh, it's just been introduced. Uh, and then the next thing I wanted to talk about is the nine eleven through uh response system. Uh, we uh adopted a new ordinance that makes it a crime to uh knowingly. Uh, report something to nine one one that someone knows is not uh an emergency. And especially if they aren't even really reporting anything, but rather just calling to uh take up time on the nine eleven line. So that is now a uh. An issue that's been addressed. And then finally, I wanted to mention something that staff brought to council of. Uh, King Street closure, the council uh had a discussion about the idea of closing part of King Street specifically between Railroad and Maple. Mostly during the summer, although there are alternatives that are on the table, we have unofficially said, yes, do that one, no, don't do that one. Uh, but there seemed to be some broad consensus around, at least uh trying to do a trial closure for the summer. Uh, when the city tried a um. A more temporary street closure in the past, uh, we found some limits to the success uh of that. Um, people actually physically got out of their vehicles and moved barriers so that they could drive down the street. Uh, which is not great, and if we do a temporary closure, then it is harder to have more non-movable barriers. Uh, other cities have done that in the past, uh, our neighbor Issaquah, uh, for a while had a uh closure of Front Street. And they had these large, basically immovable blocks, but they have more staff to move them around than we do. Um, so uh if we were going to do it, it would have to most likely be a more long-term thing. And that could lead to a permanent closure of King Street uh down the road, um, but we'll see. Uh, the purpose would be for to create a broader event space, since the actual. Uh, area around the gazebo for holding an event is actually kind of limited, there's a lot of landscaping there. Uh, it would make space for food trucks and it would reduce pedestrian crossing. Um, which is deeply inhibited by having any kind of street crossing. Every time you have a street that intersects a sidewalk, you reduce the number of people who are willing to cross that street. So it reduces that issue and obviously reduces rail crossings, uh, which can help with the flow of traffic. The downtown merchants have been so far uh that have been engaged, have been supportive of this. Uh, one thing that, of course, someone might bring up is, well, when these food trucks compete with our downtown restaurants? And um. What uh the consensus seems to be is that uh they actually wouldn't because it's a different type of customer that's going to go to a food truck versus. The kind of customer who's going to go to a sit-down restaurant. Uh, so they really wouldn't be competing with each other, rather uh having the food trucks there as another option um for uh. For sustenance, uh, would just simply keep people uh longer. Uh, you know, they um grab some food, sit down at a bench somewhere, and they're munching away, and then they go, hey, why don't we check out this store again? It just kind of keeps people here instead of jumping in their cars, they could go to the nearest uh drive-through. So that was the logic behind that. Again, we have not said, yes, do this thing. Uh, it's just something that's um that's on the horizon, something that's being considered, but I wanted to let you know about it. Uh, that was uh what I wanted to let you know about, uh, and I'd be happy to take any questions you folks might have.
Excellent, I appreciate that, uh, Councilor Johnson, let me go around the table. I'm gonna go in backwards order, uh, if I'm staring at your uh Commissioner Lambert. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the uh that's gonna do to the traffic? In downtown Snoqualmie when you shut down King Street?
So the data that we got from. The uh Community Development Department was that, uh, or I shouldn't call it data, the information we got from the Community Development Department was that. Uh, not a lot of uh cars actually use uh that street, there are some, of course. Um, but it's not a heavily trafficked section of streets. Um, so it's not anticipated that would have a huge effect uh as having folks either uh turn it, what's the next one up? Is it Northern, I think? It's the next one up, or uh anyway, uh, or River.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, no.
Okay, Commissioner Crone?
No comment, thanks for the update.
Mister Kilcup?
I apologize, what were the the potential dates for that closure?
Uh, no specific dates, just broadly speaking, uh, it seemed to me that there is some broad consensus on council around a summer closure. But yeah, not 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 a specific nail-down date, and also a yes, go ahead and do it.
Okay, no further questions from me then.
Okay, Vice Chair Testman?
Run for me, thank you.
Okay. Uh, for me, I I think that King Street closure idea, I remember we talked about it, since you were on the planning mission, I think it's a great idea. In the summertime, I think um, yeah, you need more walking space than you have down there, so I think that's a good thing. So I hope um, I hope at least you get to trial it to see if that works out. And um. Uh, dude, just a question, I don't know if this came out on council, or maybe I'll wait for the staff, um, the rails, did that come up at all? Because that was a long time coming, it looks like that's finally under construction.
Yep. I don't know what else to say other than, yep, it is.
Okay.
I don't know if staff or anything else they wanted to mention about it, yeah.
Okay. No, that's good, that's good. All right, I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I move that we approve the minutes dated May sixth, twenty twenty four as written, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes for May sixth are approved. And then we move on to legislative policy items. Uh, agenda number two, historic downtown retail code amendment recommendation. And the multi-user final plan amendment update.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, my name's Andrew Levens, I'm a land use planning consultant working with the city. I'm here tonight to talk to you about two items that, moving forward, uh. Based on the direction staff received at the last planning commission meeting. We think it makes the most sense to combine when we're discussing and considering. Uh, one of those items is the uh mixed-use final plan amendments to Snoqualmie Ridge One that we had previously discussed. Um, at a at a planning commission meeting two weeks ago. And then the other is the. Uh, downtown historic district retail overlay zone, um, proposed. Um, use regulation modifications. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. So, starting with what we had discussed previously, I just wanted to walk through it to um identify the changes. That we're proposing as a result of the input we received at the last meeting. Uh, previously, so. Uh, just to refresh on background, the reason these had been bifurcated before was because. This mixed-use final plan amendment is really just the procedural step. Um, that allows changes to be made in the Snoqualmie Ridge retail area. Um, however, we received feedback that without having a better idea of what those changes could end up being. Um, there's some understandable hesitancy surrounding approving or enabling those types of changes. So as a result, we're coming back to you today. Um, with the these being combined, we are still proposing to remove. Um. In mixed-use final plan condition number four and number five. However, and these two are uh proposed, still being proposed to be removed. In order to allow the city to amend the development, to make the uh Snoqualmie Municipal Code. Such that uh those changes will apply to certain uses on the ridge. However, we've removed the recommendation based on feedback. To amend the mixed-use final plan to specify a specific zone in the existing zoning code. With the thought that if that is something that is of concern, it could be addressed at a future time. Um, however, perhaps narrowing the scope of these amendments uh makes them. Easier to uh. To consider and make recommendations on in a way that addresses the issue that we're that that uh the Community Development Commission and the Economic Development. Community Development Committee and Economic Development Commission are uh actually trying to address the issues they're actually trying to address. So. That, now moving forward to the second part of uh. Of the proposed amendments, this is the part that the Planning Commission. Want had expressed wanting to understand more information about what's actually being proposed, what are the changes that are we're really proposing? So background on um these amendments. Uh, in twenty twenty three, the E D C had sent a letter to the C D Committee recommending some changes in the downtown historic district retail overlay zone. Those changes were that um a hundred percent of the storefronts along Railroad Avenue occupied by retail uses. A hundred percent of the storefronts along Railroad Avenue should be occupied by retail uses, and this is an increase in the requirement from the current seventy five percent. And that the time allowance to demonstrate a good faith effort to lease a tenant's space to retail use should be a hundred and eighty days. Increased from the current requirement of a hundred and twenty days. So the purposes of this requirement is of these two requirements are um really to ensure that our downtown historic district. Is maintaining its walkable vibrancy and attracting uh retail uses that. Um, benefit from co-locating next to each other and contribute to a vibrant, walkable retail district. So there's a requirement that seventy five percent of the storefronts along Railroad Avenue Southeast. Be required by uh by retail uses, if a landlord or property manager is. Unable to fill the space. Um, currently. And it remains vacant for a hundred and twenty days, they are permitted to apply to the city for a retail waiver that would allow that space to. To be filled with a non-retail commercial use that's consistent with the uh underlying zone. So currently, the downtown historic district along Railroad Avenue is right at that seventy five percent ground floor uh storefront requirement. Um. When this initially came to the E D C, they did not have the chance to make a formal recommendation, and so the C D Committee remanded this back to the E D C. During that time. Uh. The city conducted public outreach with both the Downtown Business Association, Merchants Association, and the Ridge Merchants Association. And um was running these suggestions by them, trying to get uh more feedback from stakeholder, key stakeholders in the area. As to what they would really like to see, what they think is appropriate for this area. Um, as a result of that outreach, the city. The city staff uh determined that. Most of the stakeholders in this area are very comfortable with the seventy five percent minimum requirement. In fact, the majority of them wanted to see one hundred, a one hundred percent. Uh, requirement. This was consistent with what had initially been recommended by the Economic Development. Committee, however, or commission, however, the C D Committee indicated that they thought that was too high. Um, another, another aspect. That we received a lot of feedback on was the one hundred and eighty day requirement. Again, um, many of the merchants felt like a hundred and eighty days should be, was potentially even too low, many of them supported the one hundred and eighty day. Uh, requirement, but um. Ultimately, as a result of that outreach. Uh, staff. Or the E D C uh formulated a recommendation that would modify this from the recommending modifying from the existing requirements. So Table one in on page six of your agenda packet. Uh, walks you through what the existing requirements are and how they apply to the two different. Retail zones, walkable retail districts in Snoqualmie. So discussing the downtown overlay zone along Railroad Avenue specifically. There's a seventy five percent minimum retail requirement for ground floor tenant spaces. There's also one hundred and twenty day minimum vacancy period required in order to um. Apply for a waiver from the retail use requirement. On Snoqualmie Ridge, there is no minimum uh retail requirement. However, at. The key corner tenant spaces. Um, that are identified in in this memo, which are Center Boulevard and Ridge Street, Center Boulevard and Mayran, Center Boulevard and Kinsey Street. Those all are subject to this retail uh use requirement. So while the overall ridge does not have a minimum retail ground floor use requirement, those. Uh, tenant spaces facing those three at three intersections do. The other aspect of this that applies to the ridge is the one hundred and twenty day vacancy period requirement. Moving forward to uh what staff recommended based on outreach and what the E D C has ultimately uh recommended as a result. Uh, is table two on page seven, so. The E D C recommended expanding the ground floor retail use requirement. To encompass not just Railroad Avenue where it currently exists, but also Falls Avenue. Uh, this was based on stakeholder feedback from the Downtown Merchants Association. And while this recommendation was made, there was no specific extent that was recommended, so the precise. Boundary of where that requirement would apply still needs to be studied by staff. Uh, however, it is a part of the E D C recommendation, and we're presenting it to you as a result tonight. Uh, additionally, downtown. The minimum ground floor user requirement now on Railroad Avenue and Falls Avenue. Uh, is proposed to be ninety percent. And the minimum time required for vacancy is supposed is supposed to be a hundred and eighty days before a property manager can apply for a waiver from the retail use requirement. Um, similarly on Snoqualmie Ridge in the neighborhood center, just at those key corner tenant spaces. The um. Minimum vacancy period is proposed to be increased to a hundred and eighty days. However, in order to enable this one hundred and eighty day require uh change up from the one hundred and twenty days that it currently is. The mixed-use final plan amendments that we. Started with tonight and that we had also introduced to you at the previous meeting. Those must be passed. In order to enable a change that would allow this uh minimum vacancy requirement to to be increased. If that is not ultimately passed, this will remain at one hundred and twenty days, even if this portion. Um. Even if the downtown historic. Retail overlay zone amendment is passed, it will only apply with upon the ridge if uh the mixed-use final plan amendments. Are uh are also passed.
You ask a a question, and maybe it's obvious, but why? Why have any days at all? I mean, why not just say, no, you're not gonna do, I don't know, tort lawyer, tort lawyers or real estate, it has to be retail. I mean, what, why do you have to give uh a day limit?
So um theoretically, there's no no reason aside from uh based on the. Based on what the C D Committee had indicated, um, as. I I I was not present for those meetings, but I imagine it has to do with the property rights discussion at a certain point. Um, the E D C also concur that, because some some downtown merchants felt that a year would be a more appropriate amount of time. The E D C felt that from a landlord's perspective, that could potentially be too long. And it would could result in raising rents on all downtown merchants if these landlords now were. Could worry that their space would have to remain vacant for up to a year before they could fill it if they can't find a retail tenant.
Good. Just one moment, uh, Councilmember Johnson wants to.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something on that as well as um. That uh it is possible that there could be some sort of economic collapse where there just literally is no interest in retail. In uh some part of the city, uh, every storefront is vacant. Uh, rents are through the floor and they just can't fill anything with retail. Um, but there are plenty of other things that are interested in coming in, so at least give sort of like the okay. We'd rather not have empty storefronts, even in a catastrophe. Um, it'd be better to fill them with something, and this gives the option in that case that, you know, if things truly are bad and it is demonstrably so. Uh, then, okay, maybe they can fill it with something else. I think that's the other reason.
Okay, thank you. I see uh hands up, so let's uh continue the discussion, uh, Vice Chair Testman?
Thanks, uh, maybe two questions, uh, the easiest one was, we look at this, excuse me. We look at this seventy five percent and propose ninety percent, I know that applies to storefronts. But what does that mean in in terms of like, no kidding, like, like, how many storefronts are in downtown Snoqualmie? How many total storefronts are on the ridge, so that I have a sense of, okay, well, ten percent. Wouldn't be retail uses, that equates to five of the storefronts on. On center or something like that, so I just throw that question out there because I'm curious, don't need an immediate answer. But then mostly for, so I don't forget, uh, the second one was, and this kind of goes into to Chair's question. Uh, but what do what do the cities around us do, is it is it a hundred and eighty days, is it a year for them? Is there no limit applied because it's simply just retail? I'm just curious what the other cities do.
So for your first question, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the number of retail storefronts off the top of my head in downtown Snoqualmie. Maybe somebody in the chambers might have the answer to that question, but I believe it's in the mid to mid twenties. Um, obviously, if Falls Avenue was also incorporated into the. Uh. Retail overlay district zone, that percentage could change based on the number of ground floor storefronts that are along Falls Avenue. Um, for the Snoqualmie Ridge Neighborhood Center, you're really only, this requirement really only applies to the to the. Corner retail spaces. So at most, you're really looking at uh because it's three intersections and. Four corners on each intersection, you're looking at around twelve retail tenant spaces.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you for that. And then do you have a sense on the other, on what the other cities do for the uh uh timelines?
You know, I'm sorry, I don't, I can, that's something that uh we can do more research on and and um. And uh come back with more info information, but I can say that uh, you know. As a city, uh, Snoqualmie is somewhat unique in that it's retained its downtown retail center. Um. Pretty well, and a lot of places don't have that. That type, those types of facilities, and as a result, don't have these types of requirements. Or uh we'll do more research and include that information and our findings in our next report to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, please, thank you, and I think it would be pretty enlightening to know particularly Issaquah and North Bend. Uh, they're the most analogous, so thank you.
And uh, thank you, we have two more hands up, I'm gonna go in order if they were up or have seen them, Commissioner Kilcup?
Yes, um. I still have a question on why on Snoqualmie, no, sorry, Snoqualmie Ridge, is it? Corner spaces only, maybe if you could explain that to me?
Sure, so um, in the Snoqualmie Ridge, one development standards. Which is one of the documents that governs how development occurs on the ridge, the other one is the mixed-use final plan. Um. The development standards specified that this requirement. The development standards specified that this requirement that refers back to the historic district retail overlay zone, like the number of you or the types of uses that are allowed. Uh the development standards refer back to that and as a result, because they only specify those three intersections, um that's the only part of the ridge that this requirement applies to. Now, if that's something the Planning Commission is interested in uh discussing, potentially expanding that requirement or modifying it, that's also something that we uh we can do as part of this effort.
Yeah, I would support that um for it for being all retail spaces. The other, um I just wanted to voice my recommendation, I like one year. Um in in the world of commercial real estate, that is like a minute. Um and to be, I understand that that creates um an additional hardship for the landlords, but that's also the business they're in. So um I guess I would say, you know, toughen up a little. And uh in terms of there being some kind of massive economic um fall, uh that is not as concerning to me because it's, I mean, unless we're all obliterated, we can make modifications at that time. I don't wanna um I don't wanna go to the lowest common denominator and assume that the worst thing possible is gonna happen and that we will become unable to solve that problem. So I just wanted to state my opinion on that. Um one thing that I did wanna recommend is um I would like to see for what we're putting together for the ridge to be for all the retail spaces. Um I do, I can see a situation where ninety percent is more reasonable. Um however, I would want to see a hundred percent and um uh but something else just to put out there for the other commissioners here is in addition to the actual use that's going into the space, um there may be other things that we can put in terms of requirements to help the space seem more animated, even if it is of more of a daytime use only space um with regards to visibility on the windows and lighting and different things that help it still feel like a safe contiguous part of um of the downtown uh setting for everyone and potentially creating like no contiguous spaces could be non-retail uses um and or some kind of lineal feat requirement. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I I would agree. Um before I jump in there, um Commissioner Lambert, did you have a comment?
Oh, Commissioner Kelpup uh beat me to it. I was gonna ask why just corner stores? Is that all you guys care about up there?
Yeah, I mean, just to yeah, ju- just to add to that, I mean, I I think what we could do is just put a percentage on there, um similar to what they're doing with historic downtown. Council member Johnson?
Uh I, my understanding of the reason why only corner stores is because that's the way that it was and is originally written. Uh I don't know if anyone is specifically hanging on to that right now, but that I believe would be the historical reason why it was only the uh corner retail.
Okay. So um but just hold on, is that question? Yeah, so I a- again, as the question on the one eighty days, I agree with Christian Kilco. I mean, I wonder why we have to give a limit at all, because waiting four months might be hard, waiting six months a little bit harder, but I mean, I mean, still, the landlord could wait his ass. I think a year, if it's in our purview to go do that, would say, no, we really want this to be retail. I mean, this isn't a waiting game or a waiver game. We really want this to be retail. And secondly, um assuming again, we'd we'd have to have the conversation about getting rid of those two provisions that prevent change, uh why don't we put a percent of like nine percent on the ridge? And that way, we're in alignment with historic and we're trying to preserve the retail we've got on the ridge as well. So that um, yeah, that's I think what I'd like to see on that. Um and understanding we need to get rid of those two items to allow us to make this change. Commissioner Tisman?
Yeah, and I don't know, miss- maybe Mr. Levin's knows, I hate to bring, make council member Johnson come back up. But to that last point that he addressed, I think that kind of solidifies in my mind. Correct me if I'm wrong, so in order to make that change to the ridge to uh apply the standard across storefronts and not just corner units, that would be an impetus for sure for amendments four and five, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Um in order to that's, yeah, I can't reword it any better than you said it.
Because the corner unit requirement is embedded in the final plan, right?
In the development standards, that's yes, that's correct. There's like the two documents, the final plan, the development standards. Um we would need to make amendments to both in order to uh modify that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher Kilkop?
Uh, okay, sorry, trying to remember what my thought was. Uh so the other thought that I forgot to address um was the idea that somehow this might become detrimental to the existing retailers. Um I just very much wanna disagree. I I can understand that line of thinking. And at the same time, I think this would actually um encourage the current landlords to keep current tenants um and take good care of the businesses in place. So I just wanted to voice another opinion on the issue um that I I think it actually would be a very uh bolstering effect for the existing merchants.
Okay, so so, no, I totally agree, totally agree. So so to summarize, Andrew, and again, I I know that we have to address four and five to get there. But it looks like the Plan Commission and I'll look for hands up if I'm wrong, are leaning towards a bigger number than eighty days, and so we're looking at a year. Uh and I even question why we have to end um putting a percentage on the ridge to ninety percent. And um
To to make that specific, would you say all um retail tenant spaces facing Center Boulevard? Or just all retail uses or all commercial tenant spaces in the ridge?
I yeah, I'd open for a discussion. Wait a minute, council member Johnson?
Uh yeah, I wanted to comment on the a hundred and eighty days versus some uh other extended period of time. It's just um that we didn't quite get to that section. It's a little bit further down the page. But that uh at that point, it would be appealable to recommendation first Community Development Committee and then appealable from that to, or wait, the waiver goes to the waiver uh request goes to Community Development Committee, that could be appealed, that decision could be appealed to council. Um so I at least current council seems very much opposed to the idea of allowing non-retail space. So that's a nice fail safe, uh but you know, at the same time, that could change at some point in the future. Um but yeah, I just wanted to show that as well, that um it's not that after the hundred and eighty days that automatically uh a waiver is approved.
Hmm, no, good, good clarification. Appreciate that.
And 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 also, it's a committee of people that are directly accountable to the citizens of the city. So there's that extra thing, uh which is a change from what it currently is, which is one person uh in the Community Development Department.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you know, I think that um the concern of four and five was the vacuum. Now we're not talking about a vacuum. We're talking about getting rid of four or five to preserve uh what we've got and perhaps even enhance it. Um so on the original question, just I'm gonna circle back to uh uh Christian Kilkop. Retail spaces, because I think on like the backsides where um that used to be a size where that sushi shop went in, that wouldn't be just fronting Center Street, but I'd like that to, you know, stay retail, things like that. So um I would say the designated retail spaces, ninety percent of the designated retail spaces stay retail. And um as a similar to what you have downtown. So that would be uh my recommendation and let me circle around. Commissioner Kilkop?
I agree. I think on Kinsey and Ridge, um and I'm trying to think of any other, but basically all ground floor commercial space uh I think is designated retail currently. And so uphold that. So if office type uses want to go in, then there are second floor spaces available for them.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Okay.
If uh if you don't mind, I would um I would love to walk through the recommendation of the EDC so we can can kind of talk through um what that is and then also get solicit your feedback on that as well. Um so specifically, they recommended expanding the historic district overlay to Falls Avenue, increasing the minimum retail use requirement to ninety percent, increasing the minimum time allowance to a hundred and eighty days. It sounds like we're still discussing that one. Uh another discussion point that they had, and this was also as a result of stakeholder feedback, was requiring that a vacant tenant space be advertised online in addition to other methods that are already listed in the code. Currently, that's not a requirement and some merchants felt that um landlords were gaming the system, so to speak, by not advertising their tenant space online. And then there was the staff suggestion that uh the EDC examine the definition of retail uses and the recommendation was that it be further defined to include to specify that the taxable sale of goods or merchandise must occur. Since the recommendation was made, um staff's done a little more analysis on this item and it appears that that's not actually going to be something that we can enforce. Um so still, if there are other suggestions or methods by which the Planning Commission would like uh staff to investigate, we're happy to do that. But this is unfortunately um not going to be feasible. And then the last item, uh as was already mentioned, currently retail waivers are reviewed by the Community Development Director and then that may be appealed to, their decision may be appealed to the Planning Commission. However, it's currently staff suggestion that these retail waivers be approved by the Council Community Development Committee. And then that decision would be appealable to the whole city council. And the point of that is just to put those decisions in the hands of elected officials.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, okay. Keep.
So that, so um we've already kind of got into these next steps. But um if we could get your feedback on um the EDC recommendation and any other items you'd like us to explore, uh we will do more research and come back to you with uh a draft strikeout of the amendments as well as SEPA and public hearing for the public hearing. And uh we would appreciate it if the Planning Commission would make a motion to initiate a resolution of intention for staff to study these amendments to the municipal code.
So we have, before we get there, could you go through the uh list of retail use examples, that matrix that you also attached?
Yes. So moving down the list, hopefully that's large enough. These are all the types of retail uses that are currently allowed in the Snoqualmie.
And this is uh applicable, what's that?
The commercial uses, but not considered bona fide retail uses and as a result would not be allowed in uh the districts that we are discussing on the ground floor.
Council member Johnson?
Uh yeah, I had a question. So is the issue that, I'm just trying to understand the issue with defining retail, is the issue that there isn't some broad uh sweeping definition for retail that is enforceable? However, we can um just looking at those lists there. Uh however, we can pick certain types of stores, like if you uh primarily sell this or if you primarily sell this or do this, that that counts as retail. But we can't give a broad sweeping kind of one liner of this is what a retail store is.
That's correct. You can, it's it's well within a city's purview to regulate land uses. Uh however, it's much more difficult um to regulate a specific, regulate or require a specific activity as part of that use. Um it's just how the zoning, how cities are enabled to use their zoning codes.
Okay, and not to put too fine a point on it, but um there is a uh municipal code that specifically prohibits cannabis shops in any of the retail spaces. So in case anybody was asking, that is in the code. Okay?
We can expand upon that analysis as well in the um in the next staff memo in the staff report.
Okay, Mr. Kilco?
Yes, I support this list. I think there are some potential exceptions that could be made off of the non-retail list. But I think that those could be then handled by the um community director as well as the city council for, you know, whether or not it's a good fit. I think the biggest concern I have is um you know, what we're looking at, I think, where is it, like Kinsey and Center Street? And then medical type use went in and just shielded all the windows and it's just a dark corner. Um so technically someone's paying rent, I think. But um that is just so not what you wanna see for the fabric of the community, especially on a key corner location. So um I support what's listed in the retail column to be defined that way.
Yeah, no, agreed. Okay. So just to summarize before we make a motion here, um what we're going to do is now that we have detail and I think we have a pretty strong opinion, um the motion will include um four and five, removing those so that we have some ability to do what we need to do. And then in addition to that, we move that we adopt the ninety percent, similar to what historic downtown is, that we do a- at least a hundred and eighty days, but I actually like it longer if it's possible uh to go up to a year, that'd be the the recommendation, obviously, always just a recommendation. And yeah, and we follow these definitions as per the matrix so that things like, you know, architecture, law and the medical, which we've already gotten up there, that we we don't do that. And the idea with the year isn't, you know, isn't to prevent anything, but just to make a stand saying, look, this is retail. You know, don't, you know, as a landlord, which I understand many of them are not local. Um you know, don't play a waiting game four to six months and then in and, you know, go after a waiver. This is retail. Let's make it retail. So that's, that's kind of where my mind is. Um any comments from the Plan Commission before I make a a motion? Uh Commissioner Kilkop?
Yeah, good. Uh I would also like to support what the uh Economic Development Commission put in there in terms of like properly advertising online. Um putting a sign in the window is not sufficient and I do believe that is happening on some of the spaces.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, um this is sort of a question to staff as well. Uh under these revisions and what it is in place, uh would there any be anything that would be construed as requiring that a waiver be approved if certain conditions are met? Or is it that you have to have at least met these conditions in order to be considered?
Um that is a good question. I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but I can review the code real quick. And uh hopefully, hopefully get back to you real quick here. If not, then certainly in the next staff memo, but my understanding would be um it's not, you're not, it's not a by right, it's, it would not be a by right requirement. Um just because you, your space has been vacant for X amount of days, it's still a council or a C D committee decision with a council opinion.
Okay. So again, uh I might be unique in this, but I'll look for a hundred percent consensus on everything, but I think we've got a um let me propose a motion, see if I get a second. So I move that uh as recommended, um we delete numbers four and five of the master use final plan. I also recommend that we adopt the ninety percent retail use uh for historic that we adopted also for the retail use for the ridge that uh we uh advertise online as recommended by the EDC. Uh, advertise online as recommended by the E D C. And I'd like to. Propose that we increase from one eighty days to three hundred and sixty-five. Understanding again, this is a recommendation. So so that's the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Not opposed. Okay. So again, it's it's a recommendation for the planning commission if. There's some uh wrinkles or issues with that. I I think it's a pretty strong statement of. Would really like to. Not just preserve, but beef up our retail if at all possible.
We will have a, we'll have a a more detailed report showing how this recommendation will look in the actual code itself, so. Um, there'll be another opportunity to discuss.
Okay. All right. That was a good, that was good agenda item. It was good. Multimediating topic too. Okay, anything else from uh those two items?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point we move on to. Agenda item number three, training historic preservation.
Um, Director Arteche found a video that. Covers some of King County's historic preservation program. It's a bit of a longer video. Um, so I'm gonna take some liberties with skipping over some parts that. Aren't necessarily as applicable to the topics.
Could you define quantify longer?
Uh, the video is half an hour.
Okay.
Um, if you do want, like I, we can watch the whole thing. I was just gonna skip over. Uh, a landmark designation process and then the nomination process. Were gonna be the two big things I was gonna skip over.
Yeah, unless there's objections, feel free to skip over what you think we we don't need to upset.
Okay, yeah, so I, those parts just seem kind of. Not. As applicable.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you enable sound on the share? I thought there's a box you check when you share for some. You you may want to stop sharing and then try resharing again. And see if there's a box to tick to share audio. Computer audio. Yeah.
Um, okay, so Sarah Martin is gonna be covering um really the nuts and bolts, but I wanted to give a kind of a grand overview look. At what landmark designation means uh if you're in King County. And so this is kind of a broad overview. I I actually found this slide in another one of our presentations and I thought it really accurately captured. Um, we, how we see thing, how we see landmarking in general is a big. As a community gift, as as a huge thing that people can do to recognize and honor and and promote community pride in their communities, but. A lot of people outside, when they approach it, get really nervous, whether they're landmark or they're property owners or they're people trying to undertake it. It can seem like a. A complicated process um that can be really daunting and a little bit intimidating. So. Our goal today is to really kind of demystify what's involved. Um, and get people excited about doing this, this kind of work and and promoting the historical, historical properties in their, in their communities. Um, just as an overview, I try to cover this almost every training I do because a lot of people don't know. Um, about this. So so how are, how are historic resources protected? So the National Register of Historic Places is actually just an honorary designation. It doesn't. Offer any sort of protections and most people don't know that. They get nervous that the. If you put it on the national register, they won't be able to do anything with their property or sell it, or I've heard all kinds of things and that's actually not true. It's just a. A national recognition of the his, of the history and the significance of your property and the same is true for the Washington Heritage Register. That is honorary only. The only time the federal and state kick in or when you're, when you're getting money from the federal government or from the state government. Those have their own compliance requirements, but it on a, on a local level, these are not regulatory um systems. However, the local register, which is what we're going to be talking about today, which is King County. And uh the cities with whom we have an interlocal agreement, so you'll hear me refer to them as I L A cities. Those are the cities that have signed up for the county so we can partner together on doing preservation services for one reason or another. Usually it's because the city. May not have the resources to to do it entirely in-house and they want the partnership. But also we have a lot of technical expertise um and experience doing this and so they get to take advantage of our resources. So it's, it's a win-win. Cause we get landmarks in the cities and then they get to use what we have to offer. Um, and those local registers are regulatory. This is where the land use uh regulations come in. It's only on the local register, so it needs to be either in. Unincorporated King County or in a city with whom we have an I L A. So there are thirty-nine cities in King County and twenty-three of them have I L As with us. Um, and we frequently get inquiries from people who are in an a city that doesn't have an agreement. Interested in landmarking their property and we encourage them to contact. Uh, their city officials and and electeds to really start that ball rolling and it's something we're constantly working on to, to, to. Promote preservation and get more agreements going. Um, but that's generally how that works. It's only regulatory on the local level. Um, since we're really kind of honing in on on landmarking, this is probably one of the most common questions I get asked. It's. It's what's the process and how long does it take? Um, ninety days is a rough estimate from start to finish. Sarah is gonna go into these in a lot more detail, but I just want to talk about the criteria, cause we also throw that word around a lot. So what the criteria are, are there categories of how we can determine? The meaning of a place or it's important. Um, we have these five categories that we use in King County. We're looking actually at adding another and hope to by the end of the year. But these are the categories that it has to fit in. When you're making your significance argument, when you're putting that. Together, the story of the building together and you're saying this is important and you're letting everybody know that's important. You need to have one of these categories, have it fit into the one of those categories. So. A one is a really common one. Uh, important historical events or patterns of history. So. For example, we just landmarked Coates Garage in Isiqua. It's a small commercial block. That's uh just outside the downtown. It's right on the edge of it. Right by the My Son A Call. It's now, it was a rope brewery and now it's a, a movie house. And it's, it's small, not hugely ornate, um but it's very indicative of the time that it was built. When you look at it, you, you have a sense that it was built some time ago, whether if you don't know anything about architectural history, you still have a sense that it is old and that has a particular. Representation as the scene as a commercial building, which pretty much everyone I think could recognize it as. You wouldn't mistake it for a house, for example. Um, you might not know all the details of how it came to be or what it was, but you have a sense of that it belongs to a particular era of the time of the city. So you wanna relate your argument to A one if you're talking about that. This is related to a particular era in this city. Like Isiqua during the, the rise of the auto age, you're gonna really build an argument around that A one. Uh, if you're looking at A two, you're looking at significant people, people that were really important on a local level, state level or national level. Uh, these people um changed their community in some way. They led their community in some way. They. They rebelled against their communities and it just, they have to have some sort of. Uh, loud voice or uh impact. To really make the argument for significant people under A two. A three is kind of, it's kind of the architectural component, but it also um can, can be applied to landscapes, so don't, don't. Assume this is only building. It's not. We look at objects, we look at landscapes. I put a bridge up here for a reason. We look at infrastructure. Um, that has significance in itself, that has meaning, that has uh a particular role that it played in the community. A three uh really looks at the design and or the construction method. So it can be, it can be a high style, a really ornate building um and or a really famous architect and be recognized for that. But it also can be a really unique log building that used to kind of um joinery technique that you don't see anywhere else. That can be recognized under A three because it's a new construction method. Um, A four is most typically used in archaeology. Or pre-contact archaeology, that's the stuff that's underground that offers more information than. Than an intact public experience. Uh, we don't see that one too often, but it's actually, it's usually. For most of our sites, you could probably make an argument that A four is, you often find historical archaeology around. Around historic sites in general, but to be designated under this, there really needs to be a lot. A lot there that could be. Uh, may yield information, I think is the code term for it. Um, there just needs to be something that is known to be there that that can be useful in the future to be designated under A four. And A five is, is a particular architect or designer or builder, someone who has made a big. Um, con- contribution to the art and who, this is a particular work that is notable that they have performed in in that local community. So these are the. You could call them categorical baskets, like they're, they're the centers of which your argument is gonna be structured around. To make the case that this should be designated as a landmark. Um, and it's really important that we do have these kind of standards or that they can, like a lot of social history, they can seem a little squishy. Um, because we are doing a land use regulation. It's, it's not a taking, but it is a, it does restrict what the owners can do. Um, and so we are very careful to make sure that our arguments are very sound at every stage that we go through this. Uh, that they understand that this is, this will be a controlled um building in the future. Um, and so it isn't really key to make sure that our, our arguments are clear and defensible along the way, and this is one of the ways that we do it. So um what landmark designation does, so there's a kind of a lot of confusion around that. So I wanted to throw in a couple of slides about it. So on the, on the basic level, it provides. Regulatory protections through design review process and what that is. Is we have a, a nine-member King County Commission that becomes a ten-member city commission with our city I L As. They each city appoints their own member and so whenever we see something in that city, it's a ten-person commission. Um, and that's a added step prior to the building permitting step. So it goes through design review, so the commission staff and the commission gets together and looks at what's. Being proposed and they decide. Uh, whether it's compatible with the historic character or not. Um, again, that's not, we're not intending to, to. Keep any change from happening. Actually, it's in our criteria that we need to take into the owner, owner and needs into account. But our goal is to balance that um, the need for the property owner to have on a building that works for them. With the fact that this is a recognized historic research and it has a public benefit. So we are kind of. Balancing this to every time we look at a, a particular change to a property. So it, that's a, a way to slow down the building process and to consider what, what the impacts might be. Uh, another big one that, that Dana is gonna talk about are available preservation incentives and technical assistance. Uh, we are really fortunate. That we have. Uh, the Four Culture Landmarks Capital Grants and other grant programs that can really help landmark owners. Um, pay for some of the things that they need to their buildings, like a new roof, new foundation, the brick and mortar work. Because we have a little extra regulation on what can and can't be done, um, this is a way to offset that and provide. Provide some help. Uh, with getting those things done according to um. What, what we ask people to do and it's again for that public benefit. It's kind of that. Way of recognizing that the building that you privately own is something that contributes to the community and we're willing to help you out with it. Um, and then technical assistance from our office. We are, you know, frequently able to give really good direction on how to accomplish something. How to get it through the commission, how to, how to approach a particular issue or a problem that you're having or give you good resources and how to solve it. And that can be really helpful to have people to go to to talk to you about what's going on with your building or site. And then, you know, community pride is actually a huge, huge deal. Um, it heightens the public awareness of your building. It gives community recognition and it really. You become representative of, of a particular time or particular community or particular um event. When you have a landmark, it just, it raises its people's awareness of it. It raises appreciation of it. It can actually have a pretty big impact, just the fact that you are called out as a landmark. And what landmark destination does not do is something that. I want to throw in here too. Uh. It doesn't freeze the building or site in time, as I've mentioned, I think a couple of times now. It, the goal of design review is to allow compatible change. Um, we need buildings to be occupied and used to remain alive and we all know that, but. The idea is to, to try to protect the historical character or the historic character as much as we can while, while allowing the building to. To continue to remain alive and and part of it. And also, and I was sort of gonna go into this too, but the types of landmarks. So we have us King County or city landmarks and those are the ones I've been really talking about during this. Um, meeting. The ones that have the regulatory protections, the design review process and the preservation incentive uh eligibility, but we do have another. Type of landmark and it's called community landmark and that is the same level as the national register or the state register. That's an honorary recognition. There's no protection in the code or incentive availability. But it can still be a really valuable thing. Uh, we have. A whole district like in Fall City, there's a residential. Uh, community landmark that people are there are very proud to be in and they talk about it a lot. We have heritage corridors that are community landmarks that really kind of place an emphasis on the setting. And people take that into consideration when they're making changes. Uh, this is mostly honorary and mostly just pride based, but it does have a pretty big impact and it can be a little bit more flexible. Than getting it through a regulatory framework. So it's something that we're, we're talking about more, we're using more. Um, it comes up if, let's say something wouldn't be. A good example would be the lunar rovers and on the moon. Kent recently did a community landmark for them because they're not on the earth, so they, they can't regulate them in any way. But they really wanted to highlight and document their connection to the fact that Kent was the facilities, Boeing facilities in Kent were hugely important and. And creating these, the rovers and what role they played in history. So they were able to get that recognition down. Uh, and community landmarking is, can be really valuable for that. Let's say if you have a building that. That doesn't have a lot of integrity, it's been changed a lot, but it's actually been really a key part of your community, then designate it as a, as a community landmark and get that recognition. Um, it just is a much more flexible category that I think can be uh used more. Uh, before I wrap up, uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we have about. Three hundred and twenty-five designated landmarks in King County. King County is roughly the size of Delaware.
Alrighty, that's just about what I wanted to share with you, kind of just going over some of the criteria, which kind of just shows the different ways that things can be classified. Um, and then I think the emphasis on community landmarks was kind of interesting, especially because I just shouted out like Fall City, which I think most people would agree seems like a fairly historic town. Even though the classification system is a little bit different. Um, yeah, so that's all that I had for that.
Okay, um, yeah, just, just one comment and I don't know if we ever taped it, but. When we had a citizens academy, there was a longtime resident Dave Batty. Do you know what I'm talking about? He would tell stories. You know, stories about how in the nineteenth century, before anybody thought they could do it. They put hydroelectric in the Snoqualmie Falls. It was one of the first long dish, distance before the Grand Cooley Dam or anything. And that started it. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I think eighty plus percent of Washington is hydro to this day. Um, or there was a, a tower where a guy's eyes were going bloodshot. Because he was looking for Japanese zeros going after the Puget Sound naval installations, right? And that was right here in Snoqualmie or the brothel that used to be in uh what the woodman was, things like that. Um. Uh, so my comment is that. If you tell a story around your landmarks, it's a heck of a lot more entertaining than. How most administrators talk about it, cause um, yeah, and I think we've got an amazing story. In Snoqualmie and that was one thing that. I think since uh Dave Batty relocated, he relocated somewhere outside and again, I don't know if we have that, but. Um, I, I think, I think if, I think if we could tape that or even maybe invite him to come over and do that. Cause that, that story was invigorating. I mean, you just felt like, yeah, this is, we gotta protect this town and protect what it stands for.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, he actually provided uh the department kind of like a. Picture book. Like, like historical. Like historical picture book with like explanations a while ago. I thought that was pretty interesting. Um, I'm not sure. The relationship that has been sustained with him, but. I'm not sure the relationship that has been sustained with him, but he definitely has historically provided like a lot of information to this department.
Yeah, and I think, I think we ought to resurrect that and quite frankly, construct a, a narrative. I mean, there's, I mean, kids could do it as a project or, you know, Eagles kind of something like that, but just a, a narrative of the history of Snoqualmie. Because quite frankly, since he left, it looks like we're beginning to lose it. We're going to lose our, our history here and it'd be very nice to couple that with what we're trying to do with historic. Yes, Community Development Director Otteche.
We do have the Dave Batty 101 Brief History of Snoqualmie online.
Is it, is it him talking or just the?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, we could share that or we could do another training session with that.
Okay, well, tell you what, share the link initially because I'd like to take a look at that because the stories are just amazing. And no offense to our King County Landmark Commission, but you, you start going through the regulatory stuff to designate something landmark and it, I, I think the stories get lost. And I think, I think they really, that's what, that's what, that's what you're trying to defend when you defend the landmark is the stories that we've done over centuries.
Agreed.
Yeah, just the part of the training is just to keep you tuned up. A lot of new commissioners may not understand that the commission has a dual role, you know, serving as the, not only the design review, but the historic design review. And there's lots of information, so just any, anything that you learn from these videos and future videos will just benefit the city of Snoqualmie. As you, you know, just keep in mind that you're just keeping fresh and sharpening sword.
An example for some of the new commissioners, I know Vice Chair Tesman was here, I believe Commissioner Lambert was here, but the Rell's, which is just now being built, came up for the historic design review and it was a very tasteful building. But they had the stairwells covered with grain silos. And again, it was, it was looking pretty good, but we're like, was there ever, ever a grain silo anywhere, anywhere around Snoqualmie? And we couldn't find that there was. So I think Chair Tesman was like, well then, then it shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be in our area. So we sent them back to the drawing board at that point. So yeah, it's, I agree, it's a very important thing. And for whatever reason, there hasn't been a lot of builds and historic design reviews that we've done, but I think it's important when they come up to us. So you remember that Vice Chair Tesman?
I sure do.
Yeah, that was fun. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
All right, at this point, we move on to items of planning and Commissioner interest. So I'll, again, I'm using it on reverse order as it's printed on the email. That's when I'm out, I said reverse order. So I'm going to start with, on my sheet here, yeah, I'm going to start with Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, real quick, across the street from the council building in Dune and Maple, that little goofy, we call it the ship's bow. We, there was a tree planted and a fenced in area and we've commonly started referring to it as the weed garden. Is there any plan for maintenance on, on this fenced in piece of land? And then in addition to that, the trees that were planted along Dune Avenue. And I think there was in the plans to maintain those for two years, the, the chip beds are turning to also weed gardens. And I think my, some of my neighbors have decided to take matters into their own hands as far as making them look a lot nicer. I would, so I'm kind of curious, what's the plan for those? Can I just tell them to have at it and make them look nice in front of their houses as they see fit?
Um, I think the most appropriate channel would be to just send me the parcel numbers and then I can let Public Works know that they need to get cracking on it. If it's the city's responsibility, I think it's best that the city work with cleaning it up.
Okay. I don't have a parcel number for the, the ship's bow on Dune and Maple, but just go out front of the big giant windows and you can see they're about three foot tall now.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Lambert can't see it.
Yep, you're looking at it right there.
I'll just email you and confirm what you're speaking about because I don't honestly know specifically where you're talking.
Okay, I can take a picture for you too.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, anything else?
No.
Mr. Crown?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Coco?
I'm just looking at the future agenda list and it looks like it says grizzly bears today. I'm curious what that's in reference to under staff chair comment items.
I think the chair brought that up last time.
Yeah, I was actually going to bring it up a second time today when it get, get to me, so.
Okay, I'll wait for that anxiously. No other questions for me.
Okay, Vice Chair Tesman?
Uh, no, I think I had something and I forgot and it's going to bother me afterwards, but I don't have anything right now.
You gotta admit it, I mean, if you think about it, holily adjourned. So, okay, so first of all, kudos on the Rell's getting underway. That was, that was a long time coming. So I'm pretty excited about that to have some development in downtown that I think would be tasteful and it's going to be pretty cool. So yeah, kudos for, for that happening. Second, on the, the Washington Fish and Wildlife Plan to reintroduce grizzly bears into the Cascades. I would very much like to see, a, a, as a, as a formal request to them, a written rationale of the risk of putting apex predators in the Cascades. And, and we're in a role worth asking. And you know, you have to do massive papers of a traffic analysis before you front up. I certainly want to see in writing, I don't want a hand waving while they're far away. You don't need to worry about it because grizzly bears range. I want to see their analysis that this is a good thing to do because they're going to take a bunch of them from Montana and plop them in the Cascades and say, yes, we have returned it to its natural state. And I'm not sure that's a good idea. So I'd like to see how thorough they were on their risk analysis. Can I make that formal request as a chair of a planning commission?
I'm looking at the director. I, I don't know what you mean by nodding. Like, yes. Yes, formal request is heard and accepted.
Okay.
And we will put a, we'll get in contact with Fish and Wildlife. We have a contact person over there that I'm, I'm pretty sure she'll be able to help us.
Yeah, I felt, not, not you guys, but I think maybe Councilor Johnson or others were kind of laughing and waving, yeah, it's no big deal, but, but it is a big deal.
Yeah, I remember hearing you mention it, so I put it on the future agenda list, so we didn't lose track of it.
Yeah, and if anybody looks at turn of the century stories about grizzly bears, there's a reason, there's a reason they're not around right now. So yeah, I think, I, I, I hope they did their homework before they decided to do this. So, okay. Formal request there, good. Yeah. All right, Vice Chair Tesman, any, any light bulb go off?
Uh, no, I mean, I thought grizzly bears are friendly, so I guess my mistake.
Yeah, I could give you some old Filth and Streams and stuff. It's, yeah, a lot of stories about grizzly bears.
To be fair, from what I've read though, Seattle Times and the like, I think their goal is to grow that population, I think to something only like 50 over the next hundred years. But I hear you.
What, what could possibly go wrong? Putting an apex predator back in the Cascades, right?
Yeah, just don't go further than Lake Ross, it'll be all right.
I just want to make sure that they've done a thorough risk analysis and I want to see what they've done in writing. And I think that's a fair thing as a rural community to ask for. Okay. All right, that's actually, that's actually all I have. Let's go to the future agenda list.
Ready, so here's the list in its most updated form. I don't really have further comments. Feel like we've brought up most of these topics.
That's the grizzle bears. Oh, okay. Yeah, sexy Y, grizzly with a Y. Yeah, grizzle bears.
They're, they're disheveled.
Yeah, very good, very good. Okay. Are we going to be ready for the climate change intro in two weeks? It looks like that's the only agenda and that's why I'm asking.
We are still working through the city council on that topic. So there's a task order that likely will get signed on the 29th. We did push it out as far as we could on the future agenda list, but it may get pushed out a little bit farther, so.
Okay, so June 3rd and even the 17th are pretty light, if not agenda free. So we'll see if, I mean, let's, if we're good, if we don't need them as planning commission meetings, let's see if we can determine that sooner rather than later, like by next week, so we can put the word out.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay.
If there's no agenda contents, I'll make sure to reach out to everyone.
Okay.
It's just a meeting cancellation.
No, okay, not that we don't enjoy each other's company, but okay, very good. Very good.
And then as always, here's just the work program.
Okay. What's the code amendment wireless? Refresh my memory on that? What, what's the code meant supposed to be for wireless?
I believe the code just needs to be updated in general. I, is it, Emily, is it due to just like inconsistencies? There's just been several FCC updates over the past seven years. Some of our definitions, I'm not quite sure exactly how up to date our code is. I'm just knowing that there were some recent amendments to the FCC that talked about substantial change. You know, provisions of 6409. So a lot of these things, we just need to double check and make sure that they're up, up to speed.
Okay, just making sure we're in compliance with the latest FCC, that's what it is. Okay, all right. Sounds good. All right. Anything else from staff? Okay, let me thank the planning commission and although he's not here, Councilmember Johnson and the staff. Ashley and Community Development Director Otteche very much for helping us get through this. Yeah, because I think we did a lot of good work today and are very happy with what we did today. So hopefully the commission feels the same. I think that was good to spend a little extra time on it and weigh in. So thank you guys for that. Nothing else, then I'll move that we adjourn the meeting at 8:28 PM on May 20th, 2024. Can I get a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.